Time, trying to be punctual, let's go ahead and get underway. It's a pleasure to see you all here tonight. We thank you for your participation, concern, and engagement in our city. I'm Barry Gordon. It's my pleasure and my honor to serve as your mayor. Just having been elected in May, this is a steep learning curve for me, but an enjoyable one. And I really enjoy being able to serve you and do everything that we can to make our great city even better. Our purpose tonight is to kick off our budget process, and in doing so, we ask for participation from our citizens. And that's why we've scheduled this first one, and there are going to be some others that will be following this one. But it's very important for us to know how you feel about how we need to spend your dollars. And as we use that, this is the way our nation is built. Our nation is built on a tax base coming in from citizens. And we've been doing that for well over 200 years and doing it pretty successfully in our nation as well. So we thank you for your participation tonight. We're looking forward to some exercises where you're going to be able to give us some valuable input, and that input is going to go into how we process the budget for the next fiscal year. And before we do that, I'd like to introduce some folks to you. We have some, in addition to myself, as an elected official, Mr. Patrick LeBlanc, Council Member at Large. Council Member Dennis Schwartz, District One. And Council Member Don McBurnett, from District Two. And Council Member Leslie Thomas is supposed to be here tonight, so I'm sure she'll be showing up soon. As you may know, or may not know, that Council Member Janet Jamison's mother passed away in the fall. And as a result of that, there are several issues that need to be taken care of in terms of her estate and so on and so forth. So unfortunately, she's unable to be here with us tonight, but she is in Shreveport, taking care of some of her mother's estate assets and things that go along with that. And in addition, Council Member Mark Cooks is unable to be with us here tonight, and he is away out of the city on business. So we're short on some council members, but more importantly, what you're here for us tonight. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to our city manager, Mr. Kevin Hugman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for being here this evening. We appreciate your attendance here. I see a number of new faces, so that's always a good thing when we have a town hall meeting and we see new people here. As the mayor said, we're getting ready to kick off our budget process, and so what we want to do is to provide an opportunity to hear from you directly. As the mayor said, we'll have some more budget workshops throughout the budget process. It's a lengthy process. We spend several months working on the budgets, and then we have a workshop with the council in June. Sometimes have another one in July. We present the budget the end of August, or the first part of August, and the council has public hearings at the end of August and in September. So all of those different opportunities, those different meetings are opportunities for you to come and hear and to provide input as well. But tonight is kind of the beginning of that process. I think this is the third or fourth year we've done it. We found it to be very helpful, and we get a lot of good feedback from people. Tonight, we have a number of staff here, and I do want to quickly introduce the staff that are here. If you'd like to talk with any of them, with any questions that you may have on their area of expertise, feel free to do so during the break time or after the meeting tonight. So over here, I have the City Secretary, Kristin Downs. Kristin's standing up. And Chelsea Cooper is our Administrative Assistant in our office. Our Public Information Officer, April Riley. In the back, we have our Parks Manager, Timothy Hamilton. Economic Development Director, sorry, Economic Development Director Jessica James. Our Public Works Director, Greg Ramey. And our Parks and Recreation Director, Bart Stevenson. Farther in the back, our Assistant City Manager, Paul Fredrickson. Assistant Fire Chief, Greg Chase. Let's see. Over on this side, our Assistant Police Chief, Mark Levigny. Finance Director, Richard Summerlin. Our HR Manager, Todd Segal. Our new Budget Analyst. I just drew a blank. Jennifer Otte. I feel really bad because Jennifer used to work for us as our HR Manager. She left for a while. We were fortunate to hire her back, but see, that's what happens. You just, you get old, you forget. Things quickly out of your mind. So Jennifer, we're glad to have her back. She's just been back for about a week. Our Fire Chief, Sam Rhodey. And then also, I want to recognize our IT Staff in the back, Jesse and Aaron. And also, our Street Superintendent, Kelly McChesney, they're in the back, too. So I think we have a very broad representation of staff, so if you have any questions at all about anything regarding the city, please feel free to ask them. So tonight, what we want to do is, again, as I said, we're, this will be an interactive exercise, part of it with the budget and input, but we kind of want to start out by talking about the budget and our general fund. So we have different funds within the city, but the primary fund that we use is our general fund. And that is the fund that pays for most of the core services that we provide in the city. Police, fire, streets, transportation, parks and recreation, et cetera. Water, wastewater and solid waste are in a separate fund called the Utility Fund. And it's a separate fund because your water bill, what you pay on your water bill and sewer bill, and what you pay for trash pays for all of those services. So all of the personnel, all of the capital improvements, all of the maintenance comes out of that fund. So I'm not going to be talking about that fund tonight. I'm going to be talking about the general fund. And so when I talk about that, if there's any kind of overlap, I'll mention that. So first, I want to start out with, you know, the city of Duncanville. So what do we do? Who is the city of Duncanville that we're providing these services for? As you can see, we're just a little bit under 40,000 citizens. Most people live single-family residential. Duncanville is a heavily residential city. So we have over 13,000 single-family households, multifamily complexes. We have 670 businesses that operate in the city of Duncanville, and that can be various ranges of sizes, from the local donut shop to our larger employers like W&amp;B, DeFords, and Pioneer Foods. We have 155 miles of roadway that we have to take care of in the city of Duncanville. And that's not including the state roadways. And then 191 miles of sidewalk. So there's a lot of things that we have responsibility for that we're providing services for in So we do this with the city organization, the city staff. We have 370 full and part-time employees within the city. Now, I will say here that this also includes our water and wastewater employees, and they are not funded out of this fund that we're going to be talking about tonight, but this is the total city staff, city organization, seven departments. Those are the major departments, from Economic Development, which is two people, to Fire, Police, and Public Works, which are very large and have, you know, 50 to 60 or more employees. Those departments are broken down into smaller work units and divisions. So in 2018, you can see the police responded to over 54,000 calls for service. That breaks down to about six calls per hour every day for the full year. Fire responded to 6,300 calls for service, most of those being emergency medical services. The 6,300 calls breaks down to about 17 calls a day. We had 13 different community events in the city. We've conducted over 4,500 building and health permit inspections. And that includes building inspections of new construction, of remodeling, health permits, health inspections of restaurants, food establishments, et cetera. Last year, in 2018, for our street maintenance program, we did street maintenance on over 44 miles of city streets within the city. And we had 353 library programs. So how do we do this? So our general fund, again, as I said, is our major fund. And the revenues for that general fund, this is the breakdown for our general fund. In FY19, our budget, we anticipated a little over $31.5 million in revenues. And as you can see, about half of the general fund is property taxes. And I know that's what most people are interested in, is the property taxes. And as you can see, your property taxes do not fund the entire city operations. Funds about half of it in the general fund. The other major portion of revenue is sales tax. Now, property tax revenue is what we would call semi elastic. It means that it can change, it can vary, but the tax rate is set, and the valuations of the properties within the city then determine how much revenue we get. Sales tax, on the other hand, is very cyclical, and it's very elastic, and it can change very quickly. So we have to be very careful in how we budget for sales tax, and sales tax can change, as I said, in a matter of half a year, from being positive to being negative. So that's one of the things that we try to forecast, and we try to be very careful of in watching that. But it also means that we can't really count on a lot of that. We have to be very conservative in what our estimates are. Transfers. Transfers into the general fund are money that we transfer from other funds. As I mentioned, the Utility Fund. Well, if you think of the Utility Fund like the electric company, when you're paying your electric bill, that is paying not only for your electricity you use, but it's paying for their personnel, their maintenance, paying for their overhead. So we don't charge, we charge our Utility Fund an overhead cost, and that helps pay for finance, because they're processing the payments, they're processing the accounts payable, HR's processing the personnel paychecks, et cetera, for those personnel that are in that fund. So we transfer a set amount, a certain amount, to pay that overhead, and that's the transfer into the general fund from those other funds. Franchise receipts, there are receipts that we receive from utility, other utility companies. So like electric company, cable company, telephone. And what they're doing is they're paying us a franchise amount that's set by law, and set by agreements, and that is for the use of our public right-of-ways. Because as you know, their lines are in the public right-of-way. That's city, public-owned property, so that is a rent payment, if you will, a lease for the use of that land. Permits are building permits, alarm permits, things like that. Fees, fines, of course, are court fines. And then interest, other is lease payments that we receive. For example, lease on, we have some cell towers on some of our water towers. Cell tower out here that they pay the city a lease amount for. And then recreation fees are the fees that people pay for recreation classes and programming. So as I mentioned, the largest portion of our general fund comes from property taxes. And when you get your tax bill, you know what that amount is, and if you look at it, you'll see that there are several entities on there. And so if you live in the city of Duncanville, and if you're in the Duncanville Independent School District, this is the kind of breakdown that your taxes actually equate to. About half of your tax bill or a little over are school taxes, and about a quarter of it is coming to the city. Now, if you live in the Cedar Hill Independent School District or in the Dallas Independent School District, that percentage is going to be a little bit different. Duncanville's tax rate is a little higher than Dallas and Cedar Hill ISDs. And then, as you can see, the Community College and Dallas County and Parkland Hospital districts as well. So when I mentioned the property taxes, and they're based on the valuation of property, that tax rate applies to commercial properties as well as residential properties. And so this is, over the last 10 years, the total valuations, the taxable property in the city of Duncanville. And as you can see, it kind of dipped around 2011, 2012 on the overall. But the blue represents commercial property, and the green represents residential. The commercial property over that 10 years has been approximately 30 to 36 percent of the overall valuation. Now, what our goal is, and when we talk about economic development, what our goal is, is to increase that percentage, to increase that percentage of overall valuation for commercial and industrial to where it's reducing the tax burden on the residential. But as you know, Duncanville is primarily a bedroom community. We have some industrial, we have some retail. We're working hard to increase that, to redevelop that retail and those industrial areas to, again, bring those valuations up. But of course, I think everyone here, you're mostly interested in your tax bill and what your valuation has done for your property. And as you can see, this kind of mimics the other chart. This is the residential taxable values. And as you can see, starting in 2008, it was going down. That was the recession. And then around 2013, we started seeing home values going back up. But if you look at it, you can see that actually in 2017 was really the first time that the home valuations exceeded where they were in 2008. So it took nine years for residential property values essentially to come back to where they had been. And then, as you can see, it has continued to go up. So we know the valuations have been going up, this whole area, the region, the North Texas region, home values have been increasing dramatically, and that has put a burden on Our taxable values, when we look at our overall taxable value and we do it by per capita, in other words, divided by the population of Duncanville, you can see that our taxable values divided by our population, we're still lower than some of our surrounding cities. We're still having to provide the same basic services that every city does, but we're doing it with less overall value than some of our surrounding cities. And then when you look at the taxes paid per person in the city of Duncanville for those services, you can see that we're lower than our surrounding cities. So what do you get for your taxes? So your average, the average property, residential property tax bill in the city of Duncanville equates to about $2.80 a day. As you can see, when you look at core services, necessary services, police, fire, emergency medical services, it's also paying for infrastructure, for the roads that we drive on, for traffic signals, traffic lights, street signs, sidewalks, et cetera. It's also paying for our amenities, for the things that add to the quality of life of Duncanville, our parks, our playgrounds, community events and programming, library. And it also is paying for all of the facilities, for the operations and the upkeep of all of our facilities, whether it's City Hall and the police station, our two fire stations, this building, our library. All of those things are within this fund. So here's the breakdown, then, of the expense side. So this is our general fund expenditures broken out by service area. And as you can see, police and fire are the two largest. And if you notice, police and fire add up to about 48 percent. And if you remember that other chart, that was the revenue side of it, and property taxes being about half of the revenue, you can essentially say that your property taxes are paying for police and fire protection, because police and fire is about half of our budget. Public Works is 20 percent. A lot of that is street maintenance, because we've increased the street maintenance costs over the last couple of years significantly, trying to keep up and trying to improve our streets with maintenance before they start failing. And then, as you can see, Public Works also, police obviously covers patrol, covers criminal investigations, our SWAT team, narcotics, public education, et cetera. Fire includes fire suppression, includes emergency medical services and fire prevention and fire inspections. Public Works includes streets, signs and signals, engineering, administration, building inspections, code enforcement. Parks and Recreation includes parks and grounds maintenance, or parks, facilities maintenance, recreation programming, includes the senior center as well. General Government includes, is the library, our Public Information Office, our Human Resources Department, IT, City Manager's Office, City Secretary's Office, a number of the smaller divisions lumped under that. And then Finance, of course, includes finance administration. It also includes court and utility billing. Now, the transfer to one-time projects fund is an amount of money that we transfer out of our general fund that is above our reserve amount. Within our general fund, we keep a 75-day fund balance or fund reserve. Our financial policies require us to keep 60 days of fund balance. You've heard the state talking about their rainy day fund? Well, this is essentially kind of the same thing. It's not nearly as big as theirs, but we are required to keep 60 days of fund reserves available in case of an emergency or something that happens that we have some cushion within our budget. We prefer to keep around 75 days. Government finance officers' best practices recommends 15 to 25 percent of the general fund. We choose to do it in days, but 75 days is right in the middle. That's right about 20 percent. So that's where we want to be, right about 20 percent. We don't want to be too high, we don't want to be too low. So whatever we have in revenues at the end of a year that's above that 75-day reserve fund, we peel that off, and we propose to the council to do what we call one-time projects. We don't want to use that for ongoing expenses, because that's basically, it's like you're saving, you came into some extra money that you didn't plan on it, or you didn't spend as much as you had planned, and so you have some extra funds available. So you're going to, you might use it for something that's one-time, it's not a recurring cost, and that's what we do. We use that one-time project fund to pay for projects on the annual basis. It's a one-time thing. And each year, we select different projects, we discuss those with the council, and then that's included in the budget. So that's what that 3 percent is. Transfer to the medical insurance fund, this year, we had to transfer some additional funds into the medical insurance fund, because we had a couple of really bad years with claims. And so we have taken a number of steps to change that this year with the structure of the fund and with the structure of our insurance. But we did have to make some fund transfers. And then Economic Development Grants, our grants that the city has with DeFords and with Eon Reality. So by category, you can see what the different categories are. We are a service-based organization. We do our work with people. So salaries and benefits of personnel take up the majority of our budget. One thing I do want to mention, if you look at the revenue side, it was $31.5 million, and the expenditure side is $32 million. You'll say, well, we're not balanced. That is that one-time project funds that I was talking about. That's why our expenditures are higher than our budgeted revenues. But on an operational side, when you look at the operational costs, our operational revenues, or our ongoing revenues and our ongoing expenses, we are balanced, and we stay below our ongoing revenues when it comes to ongoing expenditures. Because again, at the end of the year, we may have more revenue than we budgeted, because we're going to be very conservative in what we budget on the revenue side, and we'll probably underspend on the expenditure side. So we'll have additional funds at the end of the year. Again, so when we spend that, or when we put that into the next budget year for that one-time project fund, that's why that expenditure amount is a little bit higher than the revenue side. Services. Services are the things that we pay for as a city. So we pay electricity, we pay for gas, we pay for water. It's also fuel costs, it's professional services, so it's a lot of those different things are rolled up into that category. Innovation, I'm sorry, that, actually, that was what we used to call it, that's the one-time project fund now. We missed that one on the labels. But that's the one-time project fund. Supplies. Supplies are all the things, the materials that we use in the city. So that's not just office supplies, but that's going to be street supplies, it's going to be new signs, equipment for the police and fire department. So it's expendable-type material that we use on an ongoing basis. Asphalt, cement, things like that. Capital is for cap, certain things that qualify as a capital expense, that has a certain length of lifetime, a certain cost is considered to be a capital, so like might be new furniture, things like, things like that. Economic incentives, again, that's the grants, debt service, the transfers out, that was the transfer to the one-time project fund. So again, wrapping up here, this is kind of, again, what, what the general fund covers. These are the core services that you are receiving from your property taxes, along with the other revenues that we receive in the general fund. And I'm going to put this slide back up then when we go to the exercise, but... So we're ready to do the exercise, and then I'll, let me explain what we'll do, and then I'll take any questions that you might have real quick. But what we'd like for you to do at this time is all of you have on your tables pads of sticky notes and pens, and what we'd like you to do is tell us what you'd like to see the city spend more on, what you want to see the city spend less on, or what you want the city to keep the same. Please just put one idea per sticky note, because then we're going to ask you to put them up here on the proper category. Staff will be up here, and they're going to take those different sticky notes and try to combine ideas and write that, write that down. So if you, if you have more than one idea on a sticky note, then we might have to transfer it between places. So it's just easier if you put one stick, one idea on each sticky note. And then if you have other ideas that don't really fit one of those categories, we have another easel over there for other, we just call it a parking lot, and then we'll, we'll look at all of those. So we'll take all of these things back with us. We keep the sticky notes as well, so that we can go back and verify that we got the numbers right and everything. And so that'll be step one, and then we'll give you some time to do all of that. And then step two, we were going to give you, we'll give you some sticky dots, some little dots, and each person will get five dots, and we'll ask you then, after we've been able to kind of summarize the ideas into bullet points up here, we'll ask you to go up there on any one of the boards with your five sticky dots and put a dot on the five different things that you think are the most important. Doesn't matter what category it is. And then that's how we get an idea of what, what the relative priority is of these different things. So first, let me ask, are there any questions on the exercise? So we'll give you some time to do the first part with the sticky notes, and then y'all can come sit down, and then, and then that way it'll give us a little bit of time to make sure that we, we got everything written down. We'll pass out the dots, and then you can go back up and do that. Any questions on that exercise? All right. Does anybody have any questions about any of the other things that I talked about before we start? Wow. Yes, ma'am?
Here, I've got a microphone.
Okay, I want to know how many people are being paid from the salaries and benefits budget? And I want to know, is 61.69 percent in line with what other cities are doing as far as that percentage of the budget being that amount?
So to answer the first question, we have, the number of employees that we have, they get paid from different funds. So what's paid out of the general fund? I don't have that number off the top of my head. It's not going to be that full amount, because there's a number of employees that get paid out of the water utility fund. Some people get paid out of other funds as well, so I don't have that number. But to answer your second- But to answer your second question on, is that kind of in line? Yes, it is. We have previously put some different slides up, some different graphs, where we have shown our comparison of the number of employees that we have compared to what we call our benchmark cities, which we have about 14 cities that we kind of compare ourselves to. And when we look at the number of employees that we have per 100 population, we tend to be in the middle or down at the lower half, meaning that we have fewer employees per 100 population than most of the cities that we compare ourselves to. We have also done the same kind of exercise in looking at our total payroll compared to the total payroll of other cities, those same cities. And again, we tend to be towards the lower one-third in that. So when we compare ourselves to our benchmark cities, again, those 14 cities or so, we tend to be leaner in terms of the number of people, and we tend to be less costly than the majority of those cities. And we had those numbers, we didn't have those charts in this, in this presentation, but we did have those last year when we did our budget presentations, and we'll have those again, we'll run those numbers again this year with the new numbers to be able to present that to council and to the public. So I don't have the exact numbers for you, but I think that helps answer your question, yes, ma'am. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, two questions. I believe you said that there were 13 community events last year, I think that's what you said. And I was wondering, do those community events come out of the service area of the budget?
I'm not really, so the, well, they're budgeted for in, usually in the Parks and Recreation programming.
Parks and, which is, which I think you said was in services.
Right, it's probably in the services. It actually depends on, on, so when, and I would get too detailed, but when we program something, an event, we're going to have labor costs, we're going to have material costs, we're going to have advertising costs. So they might actually come out of a different category. So some of the labor, the labor costs are going to come out of labor, the materials would be out of that, out of, that advertising is a service, yes. So in a, in a broad sense, you know, it kind of depends on what the event is. Some events tend to be more labor-intensive, and most of those costs are going to be in the, in the salaries and benefits. I can, and I, Fourth of July, for example, we have a lot of personnel that staff the Fourth of July, so our, our personnel costs are going to be pretty high. We also do have a number, we have a number of costs associated with putting that event on as well, with the fireworks and things like that. But I don't know offhand what the breakdown is, but they may split categories.
And then also, I was wondering about our sewer lines throughout our city. Are we in danger of breakage and issues and major problems with our sewer lines coming up? Are we having problems with our sewer lines?
Well, we do have some problems, yes. We've had some, some overflows. We have broken pipes in the sewer lines. We have aging sewer lines, we have old concrete and sewer lines and brick-lined manholes. And so, yes, we have a number of areas that we're addressing. We've been very aggressive in our capital improvements over the last five years in sanitary sewer. We're doing a lot of pipe bursting, where we go in and break those old pipes out and run new PVC pipe in there. And we are seeing a lot of, we're seeing a reduction in that what's called inflow and infiltration, which is rainwater getting into the sanitary sewer lines. And we're seeing reductions in that going to our, our treatment plants. And we are reducing the number of overflows. But it is a continual process. We have, I don't remember the, the number of miles of sanitary sewer lines, but I know that when we, if you were to lay all of our sanitary sewer lines out, it would stretch from here to Austin. So we have a lot of lines, and, and it takes a while to replace those. And so we have been, as I said, we've aggressively increased our capital improvement funding over the last few years, addressing those problems. That cost comes out of the utility fund, the water and sewer bills that you're paying.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so we'll go ahead and, so everybody has their yellow sticky notes, and we'll go ahead and give you, let's say, we'll say 15 minutes, 10, 15 minutes, or when everybody starts sitting back down, we'll go to the next step. Thank you.
So what we want to do is let you go home. And if you've got anything on ESPN, I know there's three opening pitch games tonight to catch one of those games on, on cable, if you got it. I don't. Anybody know what the game was today? We win? We lost 12 to 4. Well, that's our bullpen, I guess. Well, once again, thank you very much for coming tonight. There's two points that I wanted to cover with some anecdotal information. Going back to this first chart here, the first one, that bullet that says 18 schools, if you do a mental inventory, driving around the city of Duncanville, and try and imagine 18 schools, you're not going to come up with 18 schools. The reason for that is that the Duncanville Independent School District is three times the size of the city. Our square miles is a little over 11 square miles. The square miles of the school district is a little over 33 square miles. It extends way far beyond our individual borders. And so that's why, when you look at that, that one chart that showed 52 percent of everything of our tax dollars is going toward the school district, that's huge. So it doesn't all end up right here in terms of our city. But our city is supporting a school district that's three times the size of our city. That's something just plant in the back of your mind and think about. Now, do we have a good school district? We do. I'm, I have a very good relationship with Dr. Mark Smith, our new superintendent. He's gone on our third year, and he has a lot of great ideas and a lot of good things happening. In fact, one of the other things, I've been able to meet with Bob Mung, he's the president of UNT Dallas, and he and I have had some conversations about the possibilities of, sometime in the future, even locating a, possibly a satellite campus here in the city of Duncanville. But they've got a great campus, and it's a great school, and it's really doing something well. Another point that I wanted to make before we go is talking about these 155 miles of Roadways, this is something I've learned in my, in my learning process of coming into this position, is that roads are graded in three different categories. I mean, and put it in layman's terms, there's, there's really, really bad, there's bad, and there's okay. If we were to take our really, really bad roads and say, what would it take to fix our really, really bad roads that are in the city right now? It would cost $30 million. That's just the really, really bad ones, the ones that need reconstruction, the ones that need coverage. And we work very, very hard at that. We plug away at those individual dollars every year. And that's part of the things that Kevin was talking about in terms of where we come up with the money from our funds. Now, you think about the bond program, there's six point, there's some, around six point something million dollars in our bond program that y'all passed for us, that's going to go towards streets. Three streets. Three streets are going to cost $6 million to reconstruct. That's why it's very, very important for us to very carefully use the funds that we have. And what we look at it is its stewardship. It's not just bringing in money from taxes and how we use those taxpayers' money. I personally and the staff looks at it as stewardship. We have to be good stewards of what we're entrusted to by you living here in our city and doing the very, very best that we can. So with that, again, thank you very much for your participation. The staff's going to be working through all these dots, and the next time that we get together, you're going to see some of the results and some of the aspects that we can work. So we are going to adjourn. Appreciate your time. The staff is going to hang around. If you have any individual things you want to chat with them about, you may do so. Thanks very much for coming.